Okay, as our first order of business, I'd like to invite us to approve the minutes of our last meeting for July 8th. Anybody see anything noteworthy to correct? All right. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for the July 8th meeting?
Summit.
Okay, so moved. Second? All right, David Nat, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous with Fruman abstaining. I was not at the meeting. Before we get rolling with tonight's agenda, I'd just like to invite any members of the public that are here that would like to speak on any matter that's not a part of the agenda. Hearing none and seeing none, application 212-9060 West Avenue Land Development. Before you guys get rolling, I just want to make disclosure and a little context for everybody else. So, number one, I recently engaged the applicant's law firm, Saul Ewing, on an unrelated matter. The firm does have 17 offices, I believe, about 400-ish attorneys. Important to note that I'm not utilizing the applicant's attorney for this matter, and I have made that disclosure to the township solicitor, and he thought it was fine. Also, for the purposes of the context of this, 60 West did seek conditional use with our governing body, the Board of Commissioners. The board actually held four hearings. They took testimony, they took evidence from the applicant, as well as the residents. The conditional use hearings were conducted on October 18th, December 5th, December 19th of 2023, with another hearing on January 8th of 2024. And then the BOC rendered its decision on February 26th to approve the conditional use with 17 conditions. So, the applicant is in front of us tonight seeking our recommendation on preliminary land development. The lens we're looking through on this is twofold. So, number one, does the applicant comply with our zoning code? That's always the lens that we look through. And also, does the applicant comply with the 17 conditions as imposed by the Board of Commissioners? Mr. Falcone, take it away.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. As you all know, we were here last month and did a little bit of a very brief intro as to kind of what we were up to and basically giving you the preview that we'd be back this month. The reason we showed up last month and then kind of stepped back and came back was to hold what we believe to be the most important condition true to this project, which is to have some meetings with our neighbors. For anybody that followed along through the conditional use process, there was kind of an active neighbor component to the project. They wanted to be heard in this situation, and one of the things that they were most concerned about and that made its way into the conditions of approval was the facade of the building. And so, we stepped back and redesigned that facade, and a lot of the concepts that surround this building, some setbacks from Lancaster Avenue, some additional green space, maintaining the park out front of the building, these are all things that, you know, Rob's going to walk through on the actual plan, but as far as an overview goes of...
Mr. Falcone, just on that point itself.
Yeah.
I know this was not clear as of the last meeting that I didn't attend, but I want to clarify it.
Yep.
So, this is condition four we're talking about of the conditional use order. It stipulated a monthly meeting with the residents to discuss four items, one of which was the proposed architectural style. You talk about the facade materials, which you're hopefully going to demonstrate for us today, pedestrian improvements, and also public accessibility to the proposed green space. So, four items. The question I have is, it is a monthly meeting. Can you tell us where it's held and is there a schedule? How do you get on that list if you want to participate? And who can participate in this meeting as a resident?
So, we are working through Commissioner Larkin. So, Commissioner Larkin is basically scheduling these meetings and then holding them for his residents. I believe these were Zoom meetings. We submitted that Zoom invitation through the township. I think it was posted, and then folks could call in and participate. We've had two of them since the last planning commission meeting was scheduled. Different numbers of folks participated. Obviously, we're dealing with primarily the people that were interested and became parties to the application, although there were more parties than there were participants in the meeting. And with respect to the items that we were addressing, the plan changed since our conditional use application, and that was really in response to some of the neighbors. One of the most important being, again, the facade, and the other is the front, the park that fronts on Lancaster Avenue with the walkway. So, in our initial plan, that park was removed. We heard the neighbors there was concern there. We went back to the plan, moved the building further back from Lancaster Avenue so that we could preserve in its entirety that front landscape along Lancaster Avenue, keep that kind of meandering sidewalk through the trees, keep the large trees, and then also kind of open that front area. And again, we can get into some of these renderings, but I don't want to steal anybody's thunder. There's some benches out there, some accessibility so that folks can continue to use that park area. A similar setback was accomplished on the neighboring street, moving the building back, creating additional green space. So, after we received our conditional use approval, we adjusted the building to, again, create additional green space, create more availability for the residents to get around the property, enjoy the existing trees, enjoy the existing seating amenities that are out there. That was something that was very important during the conditional use hearing. There's apparently some benches that exist out there we had proposed initially to take out. Everything is kind of there staying. We're accommodating that. The second, and for all of you, I know, M.J., you were particularly in tune to the hearing, was the facade that we were proposing. Some of the feedback that we got most specifically was the building didn't kind of mesh into what people believed was the downtown Wayne aesthetic. Stephen Varanhorst, who's a terrific architect on this project, heard that, went back, worked closely with our clients, and came back with a facade that we believe was really representative of what we heard. In fact, we were even given pictures from some of the neighbors during the conditional use hearing that were brick. They wanted to see more brick represented, and as a result, we came back with basically a completely different looking building. And the feedback that we got during our two meetings was that this was a very positive change, and the neighbors were, by and large, very happy with that adjustment to the facade of the building. So, we are kind of here in a preliminary phase. Obviously, the project will continue to evolve, will continue to engage with Commissioner Larkin and the Commissioners as this moves forward, but we didn't want to come before you all until we felt like we had at least moved the needle enough that the general feedback we were getting was, well, you listened, you heard us, and this is much better. And that's really where we are at this point through the land development process. For those that followed along through the hearings, you'll probably recall as well, a lot of the testimony that we presented during that conditional use hearing really spoke to a great deal of the land development concepts that we're considering. We were very kind of transparent with the Board of Commissioners at that point, saying, hey, look, we're going beyond what would normally be a part of a conditional use hearing, but we also understand there's a lot of neighbors here that want to hear these things that are relevant. We talked about stormwater. We talked about traffic. We talked about landscaping. We talked about all the things that are part of the land development process that we're kind of here with you now for. Another important part of our approval was, as we kind of worked our way through the process, we were going back and forth on different ways to address neighbor concerns with respect to pedestrian access movements around the site. There are some limitations, as you all know, for a property owner to truly address situations that exist off of your property. There's property rights, there's right-of-way, all things that we can't individually control. So, working with the board, working with staff, and working with the solicitor, what we came up with was a flat contribution in the amount of $10,000 per unit to the township solely for the purpose of addressing those types of issues, residential improvements to deal with kind of connectivity, accessibility, some traffic-type improvements. And our feeling was, and dealing with staff, their feeling was, if we committed that money to the township for this area, for the betterment of those items, the township could better put into use that money where they felt it was necessary. And they also had a little bit more control over kind of the general area. So, that was another one of the items that you had kind of listed. We hit that with basically a blank check to the township, not a blank check, but a check to the township for them to address those improvements. Yeah?
Mr. Falcone, so that is one of the conditions...
Yep.
...of, that was in the adjudication.
Number seven.
That being said, can you talk to us about condition 11, which is, states that the applicant should perform a pedestrian connectivity study, and she'll study traffic circulation and parking congestion during the late afternoon and evening hours? I'm not going to read the whole thing, but...
Yep. So, we are, as part of this process, going to commit to our traffic study. We are going to update our traffic study with this, and that traffic study, as we submitted during conditional use, is going to analyze the traffic impact that this project's going to have on the site. That's a requirement. I know, having spoken to some staff and Commissioners, part of the concern was we were not going to submit a traffic study, that we were going to say, oh, well, we've done that. This condition, we believe, based on those discussions, was to specifically address that, and then anything that came up as a result of that study is funded through the $10,000 number seven condition for traffic and pedestrian improvements.
Could you give me a view of when you'll begin that study, if not already, and when we expect to see the results?
So, the traffic study, I believe, is complete and being updated as part of the land development process. So, that will be part of our, that'll be part of our submission as we move through this process. Yeah?
Mr. Falcone, if I may?
Yes.
So, I apologize. So, months back, when you submitted the first traffic impact study...
Yep.
...I required additional intersections, right?
Yep.
So, at this point in time, you were prepared to include all those intersections, or that has been done?
I think that was, those additional intersections, I believe, were already done right after you made that recommendation.
We don't have it.
I thought that was submitted to John Rice's office. Maybe, Peter, you can check. As part of our conditional use post-hearing submission, the additional intersections were included.
So, in our SALDO letters, we have requested that. So, the proper channel, now that we're in land development, would be to submit them to township staff. We're not, we're not at the adjudication, we're not at the conditional use hearings. So, as far as we know, we have not seen them and have not had a chance to review them.
Yep, but they were all studied, Steve, based on your recommendation, every intersection you requested.
Okay, so we have them, you can submit them?
Yep.
Okay, got it. Okay.
So, I guess that's probably a good enough overview for how we got here. I want to let Rob walk through some of the review letters, and then what we can do is look at some of the additional renderings that we have that can show the changes in the building. Y'all may not have been just familiar with the prior building, so they may not be as moving to you as they are to the overall process, but the building has changed significantly. So, we think that's an important place to kind of go from here. Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening. After you introduce yourself, if you don't mind, just for the brevity, there's a lot of will complies here. Can we focus on things that are not marked will comply on the review letters?
I think I'm done. We're going to comply with all these. A lot of the comments in the review letters were for final plan. If you noted how they were written, it really just said at final plan, these additional items would be provided. So, we are will comply with the review letters as written. Many of the items, again, we're here for preliminary, we're for the, kind of the next round, getting to final stage.
So, perhaps I could guide you a little bit better?
Sure.
So, starting with the Gilmore letter, section C, number three. This is condition nine. The applicant shall resurface and stripe the existing AT&amp;T parking lot along West Avenue. So, the ask was to provide a plan showing these additional improvements. Specifically, they're calling out dimensioning the parking spaces and island aisle widths, proposed radii, et cetera.
Yes, so, I believe it was sheet. Let me get to the right plan.
Mr. Drummond, while the applicant is pulling this up, could you just clarify what you're looking for beyond what's written? Or is it pretty much self-explanatory?
Sure, I think you explained it pretty well. We're looking for some dimensions to verify that the parking spaces are long enough, wide enough, and to be able to make sure there's enough space to be able to circulate vehicles through that parking area.
Okay. And what are we looking for for parking spot dimensions?
In the WBOD, it's nine by 18.
Yeah, it's nine by 18 in the Wayne District.
Okay, got it. Perfect.
So, we included an inset on our proposed plan, and when we get to kind of the next round, we're going to do a full sheet showing, you know, the removals, the adds, we'll have all the dimensions shown on that plan.
I guess, Mr. Drummond, are you looking for that now?
Typically, we see that on the preliminary to make sure that the site can work with circulation and stuff, so there's no major changes during final review.
Okay, got it. Okay, on the SALDO comments, and I think, I want to go through all nine of them. So, let's start with the first one.
Yep. So, again, on kind of left-hand side here, the parking spaces are identified as typical nine by 18. There is a, it's 22 feet is required. We're probably a little bit greater than that, waiting on final structure. When we get to, again, final plan, we'll have the actual structure. We have included, let me see if I can zoom in. So, in the dimensioning, we have included areas for columns that would be outside of a parking space. And again, these are not final locations, but we've tried to have an allocation in a reasonable grid to say, these are reasonable areas where we would expect to have columns, and so we've included those in our dimensions. So, we have a typical nine by 18 parking space, and then we have extra areas for columns, and then we have the drive aisle, which is 22 feet. I think we're going to be probably closer to 23 or 24 feet when we get the final design, but we wanted to leave some flexibility there.
Mr. Drummond, what are you looking for in excess of what's being provided by the applicant in this section?
Again, we're trying to make sure that we can circulate cars through here, make sure the columns are in place that will not impact the parking, pulling in and out of a parking space, and just trying to make sure general circulation can be provided.
And you don't have that in the plans?
I cannot tell from these plans. I guess I can see the columns now. It looks like it's probably those small spaces that are little circles, but it's difficult to tell by the size of this plan.
So, it's the double-wide spaces, right? So, the double striping would be the column area.
And key at this point for preliminary is the number of parking spaces. So, Rob, if you want to take us through your parking count...
Yep.
...and show them where you have adequate parking?
Yep, so the unit count is now 45 parking spaces, so we have 90 at two per unit. There's a code section that requires one per four units of overflow space, so that was an additional 12. And then we had the one space per 200 square feet plus two employees for the commercial space, which totaled 111, and we have 115. So, we have the subsurface parking area, and then we have the additional parking spaces on the surface. So, we had, there are six parking spaces adjacent to the entrance driveway, and then by the main drop-off, main entrance of the building, there are, let me see here, nine parking spaces up in this location.
Are those, are those parking spaces included within the 115, or is that something on top of the 115?
That was in the 115.
Let's talk about D2, the width of entrance and exit driveways. Where is that dimensioned on the plan?
We actually showed 26 feet here, but that will be, we can further dimension it. Again, that was the main entrance driveway off of Bellevue coming into the site.
Mr. Drummond, I don't want to be repetitive here, but I'm going to ask what you're looking for from the applicant.
We're looking for dimensions on that driveway to make sure it is 26 feet. As you can see, we're the 26, or he has 26 feet labeled in one place, but it's unclear what it is towards the actual entrance on Bellevue Avenue.
With respect to item three, the required and available site distances, I know you indicated that you want to hold off until final. Mr. Drummond, can you talk to us about this item? Why would you recommend that they provide that now?
We always recommend site distance, be provided and show it on the plans prior to final to make sure the driveway does not need to be moved to meet site distance requirements.
Are you able to provide that?
We can. I don't foresee, and I don't think Demon necessarily disagree, that with the location of the driveway on Bellevue, I don't see, foresee any issue with providing that site distance.
Okay. With respect to item four, the dimensions of the parking stalls, I know we covered a little bit of this, as well as the area under the overhang. Mr. Drummond, can you clarify what you're looking for here from the applicant?
Yeah, we're looking for the dimensions of the parking stalls to make sure they do meet the code, and we're also looking to verify what the circulation is to be on the overhang. It's unclear if it's supposed to be a one-way aisle or if it's supposed to be two-way.
Got it. I'm going to skip over to item six, and this is the one that I think is, for safety, is most important. I know you want to hold off on this on final, for final, but truck-turning templates. Will you be able to provide that?
Yes, we can provide that.
Okay. Gotcha. I think we'd like to see that sooner rather than later, as well as the location of the trash collection area. The sidewalk, can we talk about item eight, the dimensioning of the sidewalk?
I think it's just a dimension line is really the question. You know, we've provided the, the sidewalk doesn't actually directly meet the WBOD. This was meeting what, you know, similar to what's out there now, right? That you have this kind of sinuous sidewalk through, I believe Mr. Falcone referred to it as the park, right? Is that we have this nice sidewalk going through the park.
Is there any reason why you wouldn't be able to provide that in the preliminary plan, or is the neighbor meeting sort of driving that?
It's really just a dimension line, right? So, showing that dimension line is fine.
Okay. All right, got it. With respect to item nine here, where the parking spaces shall be nine and a half feet and by 20 feet, there's some confusion as to what your plan contains. Are you at 18 by nine at this point?
We are nine by 18. We confirmed with the acting zoning officer during the design phase of this process that the WBOD parking space size would apply.
Mr. Drummond?
And so, it's a nine by 18 parking space.
That's correct. It's nine by 18 in the Wayne District.
Okay, got it. So, this comment, we can strike?
Correct.
Driveway apron, this is general comments E2, driveway apron on Bellevue Avenue?
Simply providing the detail for it.
Okay. As well as the curb with a grass verge, same thing?
Yes.
And then finally, one-way signs and pavement markings, same thing?
Yeah, that, you know, that's minor details.
Okay, got it. Talk to us about condition 12. This is roof occupancy. So, I understand that you're putting a green roof on the building, and my question was, what's the applicant's intention with respect to the use of the roof? Is there going to be any recreational use or residential use of the roof?
I'll defer to the architect on the occupancy of the roof.
Okay, got it. All right.
Just one question, going back to the sidewalk, is the sidewalk in compliance as it is right now?
I believe it is. Again, if it's adding a little bit width, I, you know, I want to, because it's sinuous, I want to make sure that in each location, we're providing that six feet, but there is, I have no issue providing that.
I have no further questions, Commissioners.
I have a few questions. So, the two Zoom meetings you had, what was the attendance like in those meetings?
There was somewhere between five and 10 in the first meeting and maybe less than five in the second.
The second question I have is regarding egress, ingress into the underground parking or the structure parking part of your building. Is there any way that you can move that to, so that you don't have to have this L-shaped alley? The reason I'm asking is that I feel like I'm responsible for the comment last time about pedestrian movement, safety, mobility, experience, all of that, and I'm trying to figure out if I can move your building to the east just a little bit so that we can give more public realm to Bellevue, because I believe there will be a lot of pedestrian traffic there once people park in the surface lot that will be available to them and then go out to dinner or enjoy downtown Wayne. And I think we need to use opportunities like this to invest in the public realm, and so that's the reason I'm asking.
So, first off, we did shift the building. So, the building was shifted further from Bellevue. So, there's more green space now along Bellevue than during the conditional use process. And the driveways really needed to get down to that lower level, so to tuck all that parking underneath...
You're ramping down, I get it.
Yeah, yeah, we're, you know, we're really kind of maximizing already that run that we have there to be able to get down to that lower level.
So, will there be a retaining wall? I guess if, from the Lancaster Avenue side, like you can look down and see?
So, it's actually pretty close to where Lancaster Avenue is. There will be a retaining wall along the east side of that going down to adjust, you know, make up for some of the grade between the two properties. So, there'll be a retaining wall on the side, and then you get down. So, this is actually pretty close to the Lancaster Avenue end of the site.
Yeah, just looking for a more sort of artful solution, because I just feel like that, you know, you're creating a pit condition there. It's going to be somewhat subterranean, right? I would imagine.
So, as, so Lancaster Avenue is kind of lower to the east and gets higher to the west. So, yes, the parking will really be all subterranean.
Right.
You know, again, you have a little bit of this corner of the building that's a little bit exposed. When you get to the architectural, you'll be able to see how that is kind of hidden within the building.
Yeah, just from a, just a functional standpoint, I feel like, you know, a moving truck, all it takes is one moving truck to block that road, and now you have 100 cars stuck in your garage.
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand the question.
I just feel like it's, it's a little tucked away, the ingress and egress into your garage, so...
Commissioner Kim, do you think that the parking, the traffic study would uncover this, or no?
I hope so, yeah. That's, maybe.
So, this was one of the things that we did consider as part of the traffic study, and I did go back and check our record. So, we... So we, we did two different iterations of that traffic study in August of 2023, and then it was updated again in October of 2023. And that was in response to a lot of these questions. This very item was asked, I think, by a couple of neighbors about coming into the garage and the safety of that movement. And that was evaluated by our traffic consultants. And I think in testimony was presented to the board at that point. That that, that access points, there's grades there that you're dealing with into that driveway. There's the underground component getting the, the cars in and out safely. It's a, it's a one entrance garage. I mean, that's really all that this property can handle. We were asked specifically to talk about, can we look at an access onto Lancaster Avenue? For example, it's just, there's no access there on this property. It doesn't, it does not come straight out to the curb. So you can see there are parking spaces that kind of serve the strip to the neck, to, to the right of this building. So there was no way to bring that access point out onto Lancaster Avenue. It just, it was something we evaluated though. That was a question that we had very much to the safety of, of getting folks in and out. So these items were studied. We are going to resubmit that, you know, traffic study again to, to the township. But rest assured, these very items were raised by neighbors and by consultants during the conditional use process. We had a number of hearings and they were addressed to the board's satisfaction at that point. Specifically dealing about access and safety to the garage. That was a big, that was a big issue.
Just to clarify, Mr. Falcone, with respect to the neighbor meetings, and I think you're over indexing on these meetings. You're only required to have one a month and you've got two. I guess Commissioner Larkin is running point.
He is.
With respect to who can attend, is it basically any township resident?
Yeah.
In, in essence?
In essence, yes, because they're just, they're Zoom links. Folks can participate and come in and hear it for sure. So we were asked to submit that link to the township. I think, I think it was, was it posted or? I'm not sure how, how it was handled. Or was it, I think it was emailed maybe to the parties that were in the conditional use application.
Okay.
But it is run, but Commissioner Larkin is running point on that. And we were asked to kind of submit that link, so we did.
That's why I want to flush this out. So that the public, the 30 folks that are watching or will be watching this hearing, they have a place to go should they want to offer input.
Right. And again, so I think maybe.
Mr. Freeman, just to say, the township did not advertise this on our website. It was, it's not a township meeting, so I just want to make sure that's clear. Other lines of communication were done, but not via our website or social media posts.
Okay, great. Thanks for that clarification. But I'm sure that if anybody wants to reach out to Commissioner Larkin.
Correct.
He will run point and direct them where he needs to go.
That's correct. And I do know, we worked with Solicitor Rice's office on making sure that the parties were in fact notified of that meeting. That was kind of a critical component to that.
Okay, got it.
So as far as the meetings go, is there another meeting scheduled at this point?
At this point, there is no meeting scheduled. We wanted to come in front of you all. We wanted to get additional feedback. We wanted to see where we were in the process. We, we have kind of gotten the feedback from the last two meetings. I think we are continuing to work with staff, with Commissioner Larkin in particular, and then ultimately with the neighbors to come up with some additional tweaks. But they are more minor in nature. So the most significant lane was kind of a real facade change to the building. And that's, that's where it started.
So would it, would be your intention to have another meeting within the next month?
I don't know if there'll be another meeting in the next month because I'm not sure we'll be in a position to present anything that's worth presenting again.
Doesn't your, your adjudication stipulate that you're required to have one a month?
So we are working through that with Commissioner Larkin. So when Commissioner Larkin believes that we are ready for another meeting, he will direct us back. So coming into the last planning commission meeting, Commissioner Larkin was like, you know what? I know we've got one on the books. Let's step back from that planning commission and have a second so that we can make sure that we, we flesh these things out appropriately. So we are really taking his guidance on this. I think it's important. He also has the most direct line to his constituents to make sure that what he's gathering is what he believes is necessary to deliver back to the board and to the constituents. So we are following that guidance. And, you know, this applicant in particular, for those of you that know them, they are kind of very forward as far as meeting with neighbors and engaging staff, engaging the process. They, they do want to flesh that out. So that will be our continued path forward.
Very good. Where do you all stand with Shade Tree at this point?
We have been to Shade Tree. They have asked us to come back with some additional information. But we have been to Shade Tree once and we are not seeking any waivers with respect to landscaping. But they were looking for additional information and we'll provide that to them.
Okay, got it. And it doesn't mean that we can't rule, we can't issue a decision here, right? We're not bound by Shade Tree, but it's important.
Yep, and we will, we will be back for sure, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I prefer no approval before Shade Tree signs off.
Mr. Falcone?
Yes, sir.
When you're talking about Shade Tree, are you talking about, so we did receive the landscape plans for the West Avenue parking lot? My hope would be that, and you don't, we will, submit them to the Shade Tree. So that's not your main right to the project, but for there.
That's correct, so.
Yeah, we had some questions about where trees were placed as well as, I think we were missing a hazardous tree report that you guys were going to get for us. So we haven't, Shade Tree hasn't seen that, but.
Right, I know that there was a request for that plan for that additional parking lot. So that was the primary, we saw that as the primary reason to go back. But it was, that's the back lot and not this project.
And it was generally well received by Shade Tree.
That's correct, yeah. We got very positive feedback from the Shade Tree.
Okay. Just going to, just going to what you have up on the screen right now.
Yep.
The back of the building, is that angled?
You're talking about the, the building itself? I think that's the parking angle, right?
I see. Is, is the angling what's underground?
What do you say angled? So we have, I believe it's parallel right here to Lancaster Avenue.
Okay.
And then, you know, this line is perpendicular. So I think there is a little bit of, of different dimension, you know, along the backside. It's because the building is rectangular rather than being skewed, right? We're not a trapezoid, so it's rectangular. We have two different lines, right? So there is a little bit of difference there. But we're, we're addressing Lancaster Avenue, right? So you're, you're square to Lancaster Avenue.
I was asking in the back, is that the back of the building?
So what I'm saying is, is the property line, which is perpendicular to the eastern property line, is not, so the property line in the rear, I'm trying to figure out how to describe this, is not parallel with Lancaster Avenue.
Show me where, where is, okay, I'm sorry.
So it's, it is, the building is closer to the property line on the west side and it's further away from the property line on the east end.
So does the building have right angles?
Yes.
So Lane, what, what we have here, and it's kind of, we are lined up square to Lancaster Avenue. So you've got a right angle at each corner of the building. It looks like it's, I think, maybe crooked as you described it because the back property line is, is itself not aligned properly with Lancaster Avenue. So the, the property itself is not a square. So the building is not, is not oddly shaped. It's, it's the, a properly shaped building on an improperly shaped lot. So the building looks like it's not all square. So it looks like the building is going like this and then pinching in so that you're going, you're getting shorter as you're moving east, creating a separation because of the way this, this dark coloring is. But that's, that's not the case because it's aligned with Lancaster Avenue, which is also moving in the same direction.
Okay, so in the top left corner up there?
Yes.
That little overhang, what is that overhanging?
What overhang? You're, are you talking about?
It's overparked.
I understand. Are you talking about the building itself coming over the?
Parking beneath that area.
Is that, is that what you're showing that is over?
That's what we're showing, yes. But the building itself is four right angles on the corners.
Okay. Do you, you said you had more?
Pictures.
Pictures, yeah.
We do.
Could you show us those?
We would love to. If there's any other questions on the engineering side of things.
One other, one other question. As far as meeting with the neighbors at this point, you, you met with them twice.
Yes.
Is there any kind of issue that's still hanging out there? That they had an issue, question, further follow-up, further thoughts that you're having?
So I think, I think there will always be questions. I was not present at the meetings, but I did follow up with Commissioner Larkin, who was present there. Commissioner Larkin believes that we have moved the needle significantly. I think the reality, I could not stand in front of you and say is everybody thrilled and totally in love with what we're doing here. That is not the case. But I think by and large, we have satisfied most of the voices and their primary concerns.
Understood.
And so we were not given any specific direction from Commissioner Larkin to go back and address, you know, X, Y, or Z beyond what, I think there's a couple of fenestration items we're looking at, some smaller details in design. Commissioner Larkin asked us to look at those, we're doing that.
And for the public here, hold on to your seats. We'll give you the opportunity to speak if you'd like.
Let me just ask, if you had to list the top three things that you're still thinking about based on like neighbor feedback and so forth, what would the top three issues be?
I, I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. I know, I know we're looking at some additional adjustments in some smaller designs to the building. Not, not major.
What would those be?
Different fenestration items on the building, like very small design details. Can you add some additional detail here, maybe around windows or on corners, things like that? But it's not, we are not any longer at the position where we're saying the color of your building is not right. It doesn't match downtown Wayne, you're using the wrong materials, which is where we were going into these meetings. We were also at, you're not giving, giving us enough green space along Lancaster Avenue. You're removing that park and that sidewalk. We're no longer there. We are providing sidewalks around the building. That was another concern, are we going to be able to come down Bellevue safely? So again, we moved the building back so that we can make sure that we have the appropriate pedestrian access up and down. We have additional plantings now on Bellevue. So we got very specific instruction going into these meetings. And we did not hear anything that said you've missed the mark in our, in our instruction going into the meetings. So there's, I don't think we have three major issues that we're, we're addressing.
Not even, not even major. I'm just saying if, if you were to, you know, just state what you think the three most, significant or the ones that you heard about?
Yeah.
Issues, feedback? Sure, sure.
And just for the record, I don't think the applicant is stipulated to follow the residents' recommendations. I think they, you're stipulated to meet with them and take their input. So it's great that you're doing that as per the adjudication, but I, I don't think there's a requirement for you to follow a particular architectural style or particular facade materials, pedestrian improvements, or public accessibility beyond just taking the input.
So we believe that as well, but we have wanted to try and go there. So one of the items that's come up and it's more of a land development issue rather than say like a, a neighbor issue per se, but traffic and traffic movements. I mean, that's always a concern with any development. It's a concern here, it was a concern through the land development process. It's why we have, you know, two essentially submitted traffic studies and why we had a traffic expert come. So we are continuing to maneuver through that. So as far as, and I didn't think that's what we were kind of talking about, was that kind of a, a feedback? But that's a land development issue. We understand we have to kind of meet those criteria, meet those concerns. And we are doing that through, through traffic studies. So we are continuing to work with township staff, we will.
On that point?
Yeah.
I think that, I'd like to see something in the, in the revised, I'll call it revised traffic study that addresses the fact that where you are is so unique to public transportation and the center of Wayne.
Yeah.
That I'd love to see that somehow in that traffic study surface to sort of, you know, no traffic studies are crystal balls. But my thinking is maybe you're going to, you're going to have a lot more people walking around.
Sure.
But you're going to have a lot more people not using their cars as well. So I would like, if there's some way that the, the traffic study could present that uniqueness, why this development might be more unique around how people move and how people park and how people use their cars.
For sure.
Right.
Yeah, and, and so I think, I think there is some discussion in there actually because I know we put on testimony to that. It's almost the feel of that kind of transit oriented type of development. Downtown Wayne, how close are you to the train station? What are the normal uses we see in developments like this where there's pedestrian movements to utilize that? How do we think that's going to impact peak hour movements around the site? So I think we have that, but I'll make sure we do. But I think that's very important to this site. So I was talking a little bit with Matt before this meeting and, you know, the township identified three properties. You, you all kind of are probably aware of this, but as being very specific to this type of development. And those three properties are located here in downtown Wayne and it's very specific to the ability to utilize public transportation. So you had the post office property, you had this property, and you have the parking lot that sits behind the church. Those were all, the only three identified by the township in their ordinance for this type of development.
It's funny because we're considering some zoning amendments with respect to those three special use areas. And we're considering doing, actually imposing additional restrictions on those. So.
Yeah.
Probably not a great point to make.
Well, no, so I, I know that you're looking to change it, but they are still three properties that were identified in Wayne by the board and by the planning commission as being ripe for development. Now whether, whether that, the board today doesn't feel that way. Part of that process, reading the, the discussion when that ordinance was put in place was the proximity to, to the ability to use public transportation.
To your point, it is the W B O D. The W B O D is definitely a transit hub and I think it's definitely more walkable. We do have a grant out that we, that we did acquire to do a traffic study for transit oriented development. This would be a property that's included in that. So more to come.
Yeah, for sure.
Any other commissioner questions?
Yes. Wanted to give you the opportunity to show us the.
So that's coming, yeah. It's, we're going to get through kind of any other engineering questions. Otherwise, I'm going to bring up the architect who's going to walk through those renderings. So any other questions on the engineering and for Rob? He's not leaving, but we're going to let him sit for a while and think about things.
So with your permission, I'm going to leave the final word on engineering to our engineers at the conclusion, right before we have a discussion for a vote. Give you guys a final pass, if that's okay? All right, great.
Great.
Good evening. My name is Jason Byoki. I'm an architect with Fair and Horse Architects. As previously stated, since the last time we presented this project.
Excuse me, sir, can you speak into the mic, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Do you want a handheld? Do we have one?
I'm, I'm fine, I can lean over to it.
Okay, great.
No problem. Since the last time we presented the project to the board, we have made quite a few changes, especially to the facade. These changes came about to satisfy the conditions of approval established through the conditional approval process and from two very productive meetings with the neighbors to address their concerns at the style of the architecture to be complimentary to Wayne. These changes focused on creating a more traditional building, as you'll see in some of the renderings, and to be more consistent with the residential architecture of Wayne. As we go through the images, we'll see the impact of both the conditions of approval and the impact of the neighbors on the style of the architecture. And I'll touch on a few of these architectural elements as we go through the images here. So this first image, as you can see, is on Lancaster Avenue looking east with the Boyd's building on your left and the White Dog on your right. The building shown here is a reduction to 45 units down from the original 52 units. And as previously stated, we adjusted our setbacks along Lancaster Avenue and Bellevue. And the next image here, I'll zoom in. Here we go. This, this image here is a. This, this image here is a close-up on the corner of Bellevue and Lancaster. And the building shown, as I, as I mentioned before, we increased the setbacks to 65 feet from the center line of Lancaster Avenue, and 30 feet from the center line of Bellevue. These increased setbacks allowed us to preserve the existing trees and the existing park along Lancaster Avenue, and allow for planting along Bellevue. Also, the stepping of the building helps reduce the scale. So, at 30 feet, which is in line with the code, at 30 feet, we stepped the building back 10 feet, so that's why you see that front step back here along Lancaster Avenue. This next image here is of the south elevation along Lancaster. And in this image, you can see the use of mixed construction materials to help avoid the appearance of a monolith. So, most importantly, the use of traditional building materials like red brick and a lighter material around the windows and at some bandings around the building. So, we believe that this helps, one, reduce the scale of the building, as well as tie to the traditional architecture of Wayne as seen around, and some of the images that were presented to us in the conditional use hearing. In this image too, you also can see, and on the next image, I should be a little closer up, I'll go to that one next. This image here is looking west along Lancaster Avenue. And as actually you can see here, the discussion of how that parking works, so you can see the ramping coming down on the right, and then that's where you would enter the building. So, as Rob stated before, the slope from Bellevue to this end of the property is about 15 feet or so, so that's where you'd be entering in. We also are screening the parking where it is not below grade, with both vegetation and a brick wall there along Lancaster Avenue. And please let me know if there's any questions, I can stop or go back to any of the images.
Can you go back to the prior rendering?
Sure. This one here?
Yep, sorry. So, the, so you, the building gives an appearance of three separate, of three smaller buildings. So, is that retail in, is it gonna be two, two-level retail in each of the three buildings?
No, the only retail portion is on the northwest quadrant of the building. These front are actually units here, that line along Lancaster Avenue.
Got it.
Residential units.
Nor, did you, did you mean to say southwest? Or which corner of the building is gonna have the retail?
The retail's on, on the northwest.
Okay.
So, when you drive in off of Bellevue, that corner there where, and I don't know if we have an image of that, but where we said there was parking below the building, that's where the parking is for the retail, right in front of the retail portion there.
And so, that's...
I'll, I'll go back to a, one second.
Can you remind us of what the square footage of the retail is?
1300.
Just rough.
About 1,400 square feet.
Okay, got it.
So, you can see in this image here, this back here would be a portion where the retail would be. So, coming in off of Bellevue, there is parking, that would be below the overhang of the building, and then the retail portion would be in this area.
Why not take advantage of all the thousands of cars on Lancaster?
One of the issues was parking, not having adjacency parking to the retail portion.
Where are they gonna park there?
In the parking area right here, off of the drive aisle into the units off of Bellevue.
But the retail, so...
Surface parking, sorry.
So, the retail basically is gonna be serviced, really is gonna be serving that building, so it's like a dry cleaners or something like that?
I'm not sure if we've really determined the actual program of the retail.
No, I'm just looking at real estate. All right.
I think it's a missed opportunity, I believe patrons will walk.
Yeah.
Park there and walk to the retail that is on Lancaster.
I, I would agree. I think you're...
So, I think it's gonna be a double-edged sword. I think if they increase the amount of retail, I think, you know, you're looking at much bigger impact here, if you take the whole frontage of this building. I think they're gonna be required to produce a lot more parking. And just as a reminder, this is the conditional use hearing approved plan, right? So...
But, but also the concept is, is that those, what's that, what I'm looking at right now, grade, those are residential units?
Yes, but as I mentioned, I mean, the grade does follow down to, you know, difference here at that east quadrant of the building. So, you are about a couple of feet off at this corner, and then you continue down at your mall.
I think, I think the retail could move to the southwest corner, actually, you're taking advantage of the fact that that is the portion of your building that is at grade. And you wouldn't have to expand the square footage of retail, it'd just be the same amount of retail, just move it over. It doesn't expand your parking requirement. And I, I would imagine that your potential tenants would probably prefer not to live so close to Lancaster Avenue on grade.
I think that's a fair point. So, you do have 1,700 feet of retail, it's traditionally, that's what you see in, in Wayne in a mixed-use building, is you see retail sort of facing Lancaster Ave. You could consider that.
Sure, yeah, we can look. I mean, I just know the, the issue with that originally was just people parking, you know, not close to the retail, so having to park and then walk it down.
Sir, into your microwave, microphone, please.
Apologies, I think some of the initial, when we had looked at that previously, was just the adjacency to the parking, the surface parking. So, other, you know, then people might end up parking on Bellevue, which I know would be an issue, so we wanted to at least provide parking adjacent to where the retail portion would be, which kind of pushed our location of that to where it is now. But we did, we did look at that, and, you know, I'm sure we can...
So, I'm not gonna speak for the applicant, but if you put, are you talking about putting retail like in this corner on the, the left side of the screen?
Yes.
So, I mean, if you did that, you're breaking up the entire facade of the building to have like a piece, to have, you know, Bob's Dry Cleaners and everyone else has their front window.
Correct. So, I will say, this was all considered, at length, kind of where to put the retail space, the commercial space, how much to put, whether we had any to begin with. We got very specific feedback from the commissioners on this point. And, I mean, the reality is, this space is probably going to be some type of a shared office space for the people that are in this building. And there's a, we believe there'll be a very significant impact to the residential users and, and the overall impact of this building by placing the retail or kind of commercial space out along 30. It was a, it was a kind of well-discussed location, and, I mean, we will certainly consider, consider the options, but it's, it's been considered, and we got kind of very specific direction from the commissioners on this. There was even, I mean, to be completely candid, there was just pushback whether we should even have any space like that in this building. So, that's kind of where we landed, we wanted it to be, we wanted it to be close to, to parking no matter what, so that in the event we did have to utilize that, kind of the consultants that we engaged, and we did, felt that any type of space to be ultimately successful needs to have some parking available to service it. That was, that was feedback that we got, and then we had to find surface parking to make that work. So, the building is designed around placing that space right there and being served by those parking spaces. We are kind of not in the business of saying, "We, we don't want to consider what you're, what you're recommending," but I can tell you it has been considered, different locations for this space has been considered.
Yeah, but I, I'm in the business of making sure that we activate downtown Wayne and activate the public realm.
But, so we are activating it, I mean, we're bringing a lot of people into downtown Wayne. I mean, we, so, as you know, I'm a Radnor resident, right? So, I've been here 45 years. And part of what makes any downtown community, I'm not speaking as a planner, but as a human, you need, you need the retail, you need everything that's gonna bring them there, but then you also need the people that can get there and can walk around there. So, this is, we believe we're feeding that part of it. This, I guess this could have been a totally retail development, it could have just been retail and more restaurants, and I guess, I guess maybe if another developer came down the pike, they would have considered that. But placing 1,700 square feet in one building, I don't think speaks to what downtown Wayne needs for activation. I think this building is speaking to, "Let's bring people that live here and can walk there, and make our restaurants alive again, give our retail..." I mean, I'm not, so, I don't think I've ever seen, like, where the gap is in Wayne's Sporting Goods was. I don't think I've ever seen it look like that in 45 years. It's just, we need life there again. I mean, there was a time when this was where you went, it's where I went, and you walked around and you did the things that were there. That doesn't happen now. And we're hoping that this is gonna maybe breathe a little life into that and allow some of that to happen. And that's, that's just my opinion on that, like, I, I don't think there's enough retail here to, to do that activation that you're talking about.
I, yeah, I completely agree with you. I understand what you're doing here, and I appreciate that, that you are activating downtown Wayne by having residential units in its heart, in its core. That by itself will activate it. My issue is that I think the bit of retail that you have in the building is in the wrong location, so...
Understood, thank you.
Yeah, and to Commissioner Kim's point, and for those of you who've watched or participated in the conditional use hearing, that was the actual argument here, right? Are we bringing residential, or are we adding to the stockpile of vacant retail that we have in downtown Wayne? And to your point, would it be nicer to perhaps put it on Lancaster Avenue? Probably would be, right? But I don't think 1,700 square feet or 1,300 square feet is going to make a substantial difference. And I don't know who is speaking to this as far as what the building line would look like.
It was me.
It was you. Sorry. I think it might actually have more negative impact for the residential structure, but your point is well-taken. Any other commissioner questions, comments?
Just to confirm, the entrance to the drive aisle behind the building here off of Bellevue, is that opposite the entrance to the parking lot behind the Boyd's Building today?
Is the entrance to the parking lot?
The driveway off of Bellevue.
I don't know, if we don't go back there.
Might be easier in this plan.
So, back in here?
Yeah.
So, okay, now that I'm oriented...
Is that opposite to the parking lot behind the Boyd's Building, which has a driveway entrance as well?
I don't know if it's directly...
The answer is almost.
It's close.
It's pretty close, but it doesn't line up exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not directly, but it's very close.
Yeah. I mean, I, I agree with the general intent that you're describing here, that you're activating Wayne by adding residents that can walk to the amenities that are already there, and some of them that are vacant. I personally would, wouldn't mind if there was no retail in this building, and if those parking spaces in this northwest corner were removed, it sounds like a lot of congestion at that point on Bellevue, to have people turning left and right and parking and pulling out of parking, and just overall seems like we're creating, you know, somewhat of a pinch point at that northwest corner of the property. You know, I think otherwise, there's obviously great pedestrian connectivity to the sidewalk on Bellevue and to the existing sidewalk and park along Lancaster, but two out of four sides of the building are sort of divided from downtown Wayne by the drive aisle, which sort of just introduces a barrier to access back to West Avenue to that, to the businesses that are on West Avenue, and causes sort of a large loop around down Lancaster Avenue back up North Wayne. So, I'm not sure if there's anything that kind of offers an opportunity to just establish some more connectivity on those two sort of faces of the building for pedestrians.
So, the, the, I guess it would be the northeast corner of the building, that empties back into the AT&amp;T office building, and that is their parking lot. So, there's not a whole lot we can do, kind of going that northeast route, only because there's, you know, we're taking that back parking area that AT&amp;T currently uses, and we're kind of moving those, AT&amp;T's moving those folks into that lot. So, there's really no great pedestrian access through that site. And, you know, what we wanted to do, and I think what Commissioner Kim had asked us early on, was to create that better movement along Bellevue, a safer, brighter movement to, to actually get back to West, so that there was safer movements around, because we are moving that parking to the back, back on West. So, we want to be able to get people out to Lancaster, or if they can move kind of over to North Wayne. So, I, those are kind of great comments to that point, but we were limited a little bit going back across that AT&amp;T property, unfortunately. And then our, obviously, we're connecting East with the, the existing connectivity as you get into that more retail, you know, you get into the strip where the bike, the bike store was, and then the wine and spirits, and then the movie theater and so forth.
David, what's the requirement for retail? Do you have to use retail, or...
So, there was some debate on that, and we actually had asked, I think we had asked Kevin for an interpretation. I don't believe retail is required here as, because of this, the way this building is set up, but we were asked by the commissioners to include this retail space in our building. And so, we've done that.
Yeah, I, I have a vision, and others may not share this vision, but I am thinking 10, 15, 20 years out, in a very vibrant Wayne, where residents can no longer be stuck in the mindset that I have to park right in front of where I shop, that, that this place is such a destination that I'm willing to go find parking and then walk to where I want to shop, which is, I think, where we do, what we do in a lot of big cities and towns and places that are draws, you take that risk and you, and you make that investment.
Sure.
And so, I can see the, the West Avenue lot being a centralized parking spot, and that I see patrons walking down Bellevue in a beautiful Bellevue Avenue, and then they turn that corner and maybe go watch a movie. And I would love for them to stop by not a dry cleaners, but maybe a candy store, or something that is, that is very family-friendly, that is in your building. And I would love for that store to have some presence on Route 30, that people know when they drive that there is a corner there, that is activated, that is safe, so...
Obviously, I, I don't, I don't disagree with that vision, right? And that's, I have the same hopes that that's what Wayne turns into. So, you know, it's just, in this building at this point, I think relocating this retail becomes, becomes complicated, given how we got to this location and this size retail. I just can say that it, it was discussed kind of at length with the different kind of people that were helping to shape this building and, and ultimately support this project, to get the conditional use to where it is. But I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with you.
I understand. I, I'm not hinging the future of downtown Wayne on your project, that's unfair.
Right, yeah.
Any other commissioner comments, questions?
I think Lane wants to see some pictures.
Are there more?
There are more pictures.
Okay.
No more pictures, I think there were two more.
I think there was four or two.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do it.
We'll go back to that here. Let's see. So, I think this is where we, where we left off, so this is looking towards the west.
Go to the next one here.
Can you just go back to that?
Sure, absolutely.
I'm still kind of confused, so you actually have, so that's looking perspective east, looking west on Lancaster Avenue.
Yes.
We have cars pulling out onto Lancaster Avenue.
But these are from the retail, existing retail here for their parking.
Oh, God, okay.
That kind of demonstrates why we're not able to provide that curb cut there, because we'd be impeding onto that. But this shows the, the entrance for our below-grade, our sub-grade parking. Actually, this is our, actually, last image, so, this is a closer up of the, the park view along Lancaster Avenue looking east. And in this image, we can see, as stated before, us preserving that area of park, actually improving it. We have these courtyard spaces that extend out of the private area of the courtyards, which, as you can see in this image here, in the public areas of the courtyards, providing seating walls, benches, additional landscaping along the, the path here, we're also having benches along that path for, for the public to utilize. And in this image as well, from the architecture standpoint, you can see some of the elements I had mentioned before, with the mix of materials, use of vertical elements to help break up the facade, to kind of relate back to images that we were given during the conditional use hearing, and some more traditional detailing of the railings at the balconies, the railings at the balconies, the overhangs with the exposed beams, and some of the detailing around the windows.
And are those, the trees to the right of the rendering, are they mature trees?
Those are the existing trees, yes. So we're, we're planning to keep those.
Nope.
Yep.
They're put in a few years. Okay.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
You're showing, this is kind of on the left side of the facade, where these benches are?
The Lancaster Avenue is on the right side of the image here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. But I meant on the, on the face of your building, this is on the, the side.
There's actually, there's two of them. So this, this image here is on the one on the left side.
Okay.
But if I-
Is there an equal one on the right side?
Correct. So if looking at this plan here, that image was looking at this courtyard piece. There's another one here. If you were to follow that path down, it would be an equal one there as well.
And it has benches as well?
Yes. Yep, seat walls and, and some landscaping.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Do you have photographs, or any renderings, what it was, what it looked like before?
Um, do we have any? I don't believe so.
No.
Any images of what it looks like now?
Before, before-
Existing conditions.
Oh, the conditional.
Well, no, 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 no. What the renderings look, you said that you met with the neighbors, they changed the facade, and you have this, this recent design. What, what, I was just curious, what it, what did it formally look like?
Images before were more contemporary. You have some?
And the massing was, was much, much more. It had a, it had a monolithic feel to it.
So maybe if we can zoom in on the, I just have some exhibits from our conditional use hearing, David, that might help.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, I, I've got the exhibit packet, so once we maybe could pull up these on the table, I can show you all some, some pictures. So I'll use the pointer, and I'll just kind of show, I mean, you can see, not hard, right, to notice it, but kind of very significant change in the facade here, the look of the Again, this is kind of a different look of the courtyard area. This was much tighter to Lancaster Avenue, did not have the, the same kind of sidewalk that, that we have now, which was preserving existing. That was, again, a big comment from the neighbors. This is looking down Lancaster Avenue, kind of moving east. Again, a very, a different, just a different look.
I don't know whom to congratulate, the architect, or the residents, or maybe both.
Yeah.
This is a significant change.
So we, we were grateful for the feedback, you know, during the process. I mean, that's why you have hearings like that, and that's why you engage good consultants. And Stephen did a great job. Devin and Will and Kenny, I mean, they were certainly open to, to all of that. Not every applicant or property owner is open to hearing, you know, that type of feedback through the process. So I think where we landed is, is a very positive spot. I mean, and that's, that's, I mean, MJ, just to kind of put a bow on it, that's really the feedback that I got directly from Commissioner Larkin, which was, this is much better than where you were, and the feedback he is getting is that the residents are generally much more happy. You'll hear from a couple tonight, they may or may not be, but the general feedback is, this project has moved in the right direction. And that's, that's all an applicant can do when they're kind of working within the parameters of the code, which is generally what this applicant has done. And, you know, it was no easy feat to get through conditional use. I mean, it was, it was a long, I think we had four hearings ultimately to get our decision. So it was, it was the real deal, as my father would say.
Thank you.
So, last question. The property is going to be LEED certified. Aside from the walkability and aside from the green roof, what are some of the other green or sustainable types of ideas that you guys are going to be implementing with the building?
There is a condition here. It's part of the conditions. So, David, I, I'm not sure if I can cite one of them, but it's definitely part of the adjudication.
Yeah, I read it. It has to be LEED certified.
Correct.
It, it will be LEED certified, as, as we continue on with the design.
It's Condition thirteen.
Yeah.
But, oh, okay, but it's, nothing, nothing.
Nothing yet, but as we continue on the design and development of, of the process, we'll, we'll continue, we'll, we'll make sure that it is LEED certified.
There's nothing like, no ideas for putting up some solar, or anything like that?
Not at this time, no.
There was a question earlier about the intended use of the green roof.
Oh, yes. So there will be no public use of the, or resident use of the green roof.
Okay.
We'll ask it again at final. Okay, as promised, I wanted to give our consultants a shot here. Mr. Phillips, anything that we missed?
No, I don't think so. I've been in communication with the, the applicant's engineer a number of times over this during the design process, so I'm comfortable with where they are with a lot of the items that are in my letter, where they say that they will comply. Touching on the, on the parking garage, just a, just a second. Typically, that doesn't get finalized until the final plan, due to the structural relevance that have to go through with the building and where you locate that. But, again, they provided that they have sufficient parking now. Come final design of the building, if they don't, it's back to the drawing board. So whatever would be included here now at the preliminary plan is still subject to change, and it's subject to review in the final plan.
Yeah, and to be fair, I think your letter was, shall we say, brief compared to the traffic letter. And Mr. Drummond, if you could proffer us additional information?
As we discussed earlier, there are some dimensions and stuff like that we would like to see to make sure that the circulation and safety aspects of the plan are, are met. I, I think they should clean up some of this stuff per our comments.
And just to be clear, so that everybody understands, you would prefer to have that now, at prelimi, prior to preliminary, versus?
Typically, we would see a lot of these things cleaned up before, during preliminary, such as a traffic study that was, the revised traffic study, and the circulation stuff we already spoke about, to make sure that there's not significant changes during final design.
Okay, translation, we're close, but not quite there.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Mr. Norsini, just, you know.
So just to mirror what Mr. Drummond said. So usually, preliminary to final is minor cleanup, outside agency approval. We, we do have some hanging chads here with the traffic study, pedestrian study, all that good stuff.
Thank you for bringing that term back. Let's hear from the resident. Please come up, just state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, I'm an SOP.
Thank you.
John Aiken. I live at 116 South Bellevue Avenue. And I've lived in this community since nineteen fifty-one. My family has been here, and one brother and myself are the remainers of my family, having lived here and gone through Radnor School Systems, and so forth and so on. Is it fair to categorize this board as custodians of the community? Is that a fair assessment?
It's your mic.
Say again?
Characterize us in any way you'd like.
Well, no, no, I wouldn't do that in any way I like. When I ask that question, I'm simply asking for some firm information, not off-the-wall stuff. Because somebodies are the custodians of the community, and the Board of Commissioners, the Planning Board, whatever the board might be. Is my assumption correct, that is, I'm not trying to use any label that I want to. I'm trying to get an understanding, a better understanding. In the course of the presentation here, you were talking about this $10,000 fee per unit to be put into some fund to address issues down the road. Is that accurate? Did I understand that correctly?
So it, there is a condition that requires a capital contribution in the amount of $10,000 per dwelling unit, so.
Yeah, per dwelling unit. But this, this is a fund that is being set aside to address issues that may occur in the future, such as unintended consequences? Is that accurate?
So the wording is to be utilized for infrastructure or other improvements within the township's sole discretion. I think that's a very wide berth.
Okay, that, that money is to address infrastructure issues? I didn't quite understand that.
Infrastructure or other improvements within the township's.
Infrastructure or other issues.
Improvements, yeah.
So, that, you, you, there is some anticipation that there needs to be some funds available to address down the road, issues, elements, problems, whatever it might be, infrastructure, traffic, trash, things, pickup, noise, so forth and so on. That money is for future issues, if there's problems. Just pointing to be reasonably.
I don't want to misinterpret it. Perhaps we could get our solicitor to give an opinion here on what that funding is for?
It, it's for what the, the Board of Commissioners decides. You know, it's not a legal, it's really, it's not, that's not a legal question, it's more of a policy, a policy question.
Okay, well, I'll-
And there's no-
I'll just skip that and, and get on.
Yeah, so it's a, it's not a sinking fund, it's just a capital contribution, and the BOC can decide what.
It's just, that's not just unique to this property, I mean, or this project. It happens other commu, other projects in Radnor Township. It happens all the time throughout the United States. This is fairly common ask of, of development.
I'll, I'll just finish with my, my comments. There was stated by the, I think this young fellow here, that almost all of the issues have been satisfied. Was that inaccurate?
I believe, I think that's how it's reported to me.
Okay, so your understanding is that almost all issues have been addressed or resolved or dealt with?
That's correct.
Seems we're still here with a lot of issues. I, I got the impression in, in your speaking, and in your representative's speaking, that you're just not sure about various issues and elements, whether it's parking, or traffic, or noise, or access to the garage, or safety features. There was a situation in California two or three weeks ago, where one lithium ion battery burst into flames on a major arterial throughway on a highway, and it blocked all the traffic for hours and hours. That was just one lithium ion battery. And I've expressed my concerns about safety and emergency access, and I haven't gotten sort of a, a sense that that has been addressed. But given the, well, it's not up there now, but given the close quarters and driving all the way around the building, I know everybody sort of has said that to have an entranceway from Lancaster Avenue into the garage, got to deal with PennDOT. And in the letter that I wrote to, I think it was Mr. Rice, I suggested, get with PennDOT, nail this to the floor, deal with this. The wraparound driveway, all you need is one situation to develop to cause an entanglement, and if emergency vehicles are going to get in there, we're going to have serious problems. I'm curious about the antiqu, the antiquated infrastructure, whether it's trash, pedestrian, safety, parking, noise, water supply, water removal, and such. My, my, my sense is that there are antique, can you assure us that the infrastructure in all its various elements is going to be sufficient to deal with the added pressure of these developments? I, I apologize for my wording. This is certainly not my forte. I'm a professional artist. I've, I've worked and lived in Radnor Township, gone through the schools, served in the military. I help out, I serve some board, terms on the ethics board. I help out at the firehouse. I've been working the poles for twenty-five years. And I'm just some little guy, stuck in a little corner there, in our nice little quiet corner in Wayne on Bellevue Avenue. We residents will be the ones to bear most of the brunt of whatever unintended consequences are down the road. I'll try to just bring this up. Certainly, trash and debris is a huge issue, and environmental conservational aspects. If you get anywhere in downtown Wayne, and the blocks that sort of stretch out from south Wayne, north Wayne, the center of Wayne, all the way to, to, to the Wawa store right near Boyd's, or if you're going east down, down Lancaster Avenue, towards Aberdeen Avenue and that, there are hundreds of cigarette butts in the gutter, or on the sidewalks. There are coffee cup tops. There are plastic, you know, you can get a donut, and it's in a plastic wrap, cellophane wrap. That's not biodegradable. There's an enormous amount, and for people, if you don't walk around the downtown Wayne areas, and particularly where Boyd's and the Wawa is, we've got a community of very well-educated, concerned people about environmental issues. I walk through that lot, and there are plastic caps, there are cellophane wraps, there are forks and spoons, and after the rain, it's all cleared out, because they've gone right down the water into the aqua, aquifer, into the water system, and into Darby Creek. It all ends up in the ocean. This project, from the beginning of last year, has, it occurs to me, in trying to get all of these details and situations handled beforehand, let alone afterhand, what it has occurred to me is, it's sort of like trying to put a twelve, a size twelve foot into a size ten shoe. Now, maybe I'm just putting my foot in my mouth, and if I put my foot into my mouth, and I'm going to shoot my foot off, I better make sure it's not in my mouth first. But there's a lot of information here, it's difficult to, and we certainly don't have, got quite a cadre of, I guess you all are the sixty west conglomerate, is that right?
Mr. Aiken.
Yeah.
If I could just, if I could just request that you just stick to your main points. We heard you, just for the record, regarding traffic, some safety issues, potential trash impact, and by the way, for the record, there, these are all covered in the consultant's letters, in some way.
They're covered in what?
In, in the consultant's letters that are a part of the hearing.
Is that a letter that's available?
Yes. So in, in our agenda, and this is online, our consultants, Gilmore and Associates, and Gannett Fleming, they provide an engineering assessment of the project.
Is that a form that I can get?
Absolutely, yeah. Just go to radnor.com.
Oh, okay, I don't have a computer or website or anything. I'm somewhat a throwback in that sense. I'm not tethered.
We're able to provide that for you.
You know, I do everything, okay, all right, I won't worry about that. When you referenced issues, you know, whether it's traffic or parking, pedestrian trash, water supply and removal, sewage, antiqu, all of the infrastructure issues are, are issues that we will have to live with. I'll leave this with one thing, is all of the photographs and these video images that you have shown, they show a widened Bellevue, South Bellevue Avenue, that it, that is made to look as though it's much wider than it actually is. Now, down the road, if there's an issue with traffic and so forth and so on, it, is there the possibility that the township will, or the, the group will apply to get some extra property? Is, are there plans to widen South Bellevue Avenue in any way, shape, or form down the road? Is there something that we as residents can be comfortable with, that our properties will not be impacted by this development and the issues that we will face down the road? And for anyone to set them aside is disingenuous. We few people who live on Bellevue will bear the brunt of whatever unintended consequences they are. they are. So, is there any possibility that anyone's planning down the road to widen South Bellevue and take property from somebody?
That's not a part of the submission.
That's what?
That's not a part of the submission, nor is it being contemplated. It's not part of the plan.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Aiken. Any other public comment?
Yes, I'm Jeff Pierceall. I live on West Peachtree Lane, directly behind this building that's being proposed here.
Give your last name again, sir.
Pierceall.
Pierceall, thank you.
Any case, I've been to all the meetings up to this point, and I just wanted to hear what Mr. Aiken is saying, and those are things that need to be considered by the Planning Commission. They're the kind of unseen things that, you know, many times go unnoticed and unaddressed. I was more concerned with the actual building and what it looked like, and the green space, the architecture, and its size. And I will, I wanted to commend this entire group, and Commissioner Larkin, and everyone. As far as the issues that I really zoomed in on, they hit it on the nose. I think it was you, Mr. Fruman, is it, that said significant improvement, I guess was the word, or something. And I want to agree. The building, as it was originally presented, was very stark, modernistic, really not in keeping with what Wayne is about. And I was surprised to see how open they were to change. And as the final, well, some of the final pictures came out last week, they were just, you know, right on the money, as far as I'm concerned. They addressed all the things I said about facade architecture. And I, you know, pictures sometimes can be, excuse me, be deceiving, but the, it's a building that I think the town of Wayne can be very proud of, as I see it, just the, as it looked, for people going by. I heard Mr. Kim over here talk about the retail part, and I tend to agree with, is it not working?
No, it can't hear you.
Okay. I tend to agree with him in the importance of retail, but I do also, someone else said that the, to kind of ruin the beauty of this facade, wouldn't say ruin it, because you'd have to change the windows, you'd have to change things for a retail building, it just would take away from the rest of this, what I say, very magnificent-looking apartment. You know, I started the whole thing with what happened over at the Wegmans parking lot, or Wegmans over in King of Prussia, with all those different quote-unquote apartments, which are, that's why I entered into this, because I didn't want to see that same type of architecture and density and everything else with this building. And so, this is just the direct opposite of that. So, I wanted to thank you for all that you've done with that, but I also ask you to surely try to address Mr. Aiken and the people with the unseen things that we don't always want to deal with, because nobody's ever going to see them. But they need to be addressed as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierceall. Any other public comment tonight? Okay. So, first of all, I wanted to thank the applicant and the residents, as well as our consultants, for providing significant commentary on where we are. I mean, we're much further along since that time that we had the conditional use hearings. This was a hot item on the BOC agenda. I've attended some of those, and I know some of our commissioners either attended or watched as well. So, a couple of thoughts here before we look at next steps. I wanted to commend the applicant for, and I know it's one of the conditions, but I wanted to commend the applicant for the openness in considering your resident input. The conditional use hearing was all about resident input, and I know that many residents spoke, they provided commentary. The substantial revisions have been made in the architectural style of the building, as well as the improvements on the ground to make the property more accessible to Wayne residents. I'm also glad that we were able to clarify tonight how residents can make additional comments if necessary. That was not clear before, certainly wasn't clear at the last meeting, and I think the intention here is that this is going to continue to be an interactive process, and wanted to acknowledge that. At the same time, to Mr. Aiken's point, there are some questions. And I think partly, our consultants, certainly on the transportation side, have been asking those questions. And I think, you know, in my opinion, and this is just a couple of items, that I would have preferred to see prior to considering preliminary final. One would be the truck turning templates. To Mr. Aiken's point, we want to see emergency service access to the property, what it would look like if there was an incident. Location of trash area, I think that's one of the things. This is not an all-inclusive list. I appreciate y'all taking notes, but I've got my top three here. And certainly, the site distances of the proposed driveway, that's an important item. In addition to that, there's that traffic study that we've been waiting for. Certainly, I would have preferred to have that in hand, so we can discuss. There are other comments, there are other thoughts, but I think if the applicant goes a long way to satisfy our Gilmore and Associates' commentary, we could maybe take a look at this again at a future meeting. So, you know, those are my thoughts. Commissioners?
I agree with your take on this. I especially would like to see the traffic study and be able to have some time to digest that. And also, I feel like this hasn't cleared shea tree yet, so I'd prefer to hold off on even preliminary until that happens. And like I said, it's minor, minor things for shea tree, but I think in general, I think it's not clean enough.
Any other thoughts?
I'd just also commend you on the changes based on feedback. I think, for me, I'm still a little bit hesitant about the level of sort of communication or information that's going out about the neighbor meetings, especially given the sort of attendance of 10 or so neighbors and then six for the second meeting. It feels a little bit like that's sort of left to Commissioner Larkin, and was maybe communicated to the parties to the conditional use hearings, but not to the neighbors more broadly. So, it'd be nice to see a little bit more of an active outreach, in my opinion. But I commend you on the feedback that's been incorporated in the design. I do think that the pinch point at the driveway entrance, you're overparked already, 115 to 111, I think, so for my own preference, I'd prefer to have less parking spots at that entrance, and just make it less congested, and still meet the requirements. And then I have some questions about the public park along Lancaster Avenue, and how inviting that would actually be for the public, given the windows of the first four residential units that are right up against that sidewalk. And just would be interested in some more clarity on that in a future discussion.
So, Mr. Falcone, I don't want to take a vote, but I wanted to get a temperature check for the applicant. What would you like us to do? Would you like us to take a vote, or do you want to come back?
I mean, so that's, that's a loaded question, right? So, we would love.
I know it's not much of a choice, right? But if we take a vote now, and I don't think it, my sense is that it may not go the way you would like it to go.
Right. I get that same sense. I just, I feel like I have to at least say, I do believe this applicant has done a good job to this point, getting their plans where they are for a preliminary submission. You know, I think, I do think, and we'll work this out with staff, I think there is some confusion as to where that traffic study sits. We believe it's been with the township since October of 2023, so.
Excuse me, I'm going to jump in there. So, that was never submitted to the township through the land development process. It may have been part of the conditional use process, but this is a different process. And our traffic consultant, myself, none of us have.
And I don't, and Dave, I do not have it. Unless John hid it away somewhere, we don't have it either.
So, it's a part of the record. I'm just saying, we will resubmit it, and we actually have a response on it. So, we will resubmit it. So, I just, I don't want to get bogged down on things that are cleanup items. But we do understand the process, and I very much appreciate the discussion of the board, and understand where this is heading, if we ask for a vote this evening. So, we will absolutely come back. We will resubmit the traffic study to the township. We'll get a review letter from Damon. We'll get those responses, so that we can be kind of more informed. We will clean up the plans. We'll get the kind of the cleanup items that we believe maybe aren't shown right now. We'll get those addressed, so that the letters themselves are cleaner. We hear you. We appreciate the time, and we'll be back to do better next time.
And David, just with, when you come back, can you actually have like a more of a detailed plan for the parking garage itself, just to see what the internal turning radiuses are?
Yep. So, Rob is going to come back with a cleaned-up plan, with dimensions, and turning radii, and all of the things that you all need to see. He will work with Damon to make sure that what's on the plans are responsive to what Damon's looking for. I think, MJ, you know, some of your questions, kind of what exactly are you looking for? We're going to make sure we flesh those out before we come back, so that we're understanding what you guys want to see on the plans, and more importantly, I think, what Damon and Roger want to see, so that we can, we can have that discussion.
And to be fair, I don't think that going through the nine items and traffic was necessary. I think that could have been done outside of the meeting. And I do think that there is a fundamental sort of misunderstanding of what needs to be provided prior or after. I think you guys can clean that up.
I think we will.
Is there anything that they need to do in order to come back? Just.
Are you asking us?
Yes.
Just what Mr. Falcone said, they're going to make some revisions to the plans, and we will take a look at it before the next.
Okay, there's no extension of time that they need to grant us?
I think I did submit.
I don't have my letter open, but if there is, we'll take care of it.
Yeah.
I think.
It's October.
Yeah, I think we have plenty of time.
All right, very good.
Yep.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Thanks for that. They will be back. The second item on our list, hopefully it will not take as long, I promise, is ordinance number 2024-04. This is, has been in front of us three times. This is the third time it's been in front of us. So, Mr. Norsini, are you able to lead us in, or is that the solicitor? An ordinance 2024. First of all, why is it in front of us for the third time?
So, it's in front of you for the third time, because the township is legally obligated to send it to you and the County Planning Commission whenever any change whatsoever is made to the language of the ordinance since the last time you've seen it. So, this ordinance was tweaked, and therefore, because those changes, no matter how minor, were done, we are obligated to send it to you. Otherwise, a court, it could be challenged, and a court would find it void ab initio. So, and the requirement is for us to send it to you. It is not for you to act on it. It's not for you to review it. It is not even for you to have it on your agenda. We just have to send it. So, you can decide, it's late, I want to go home. You can discuss it. You can give yet another recommendation. It doesn't matter what you do. We just had to send it to you, because it was changed.
Okay. I'll be brief, no matter how long it takes. We'll be very quick. So, 10 sections, seven zoning code amendments in this ordinance. We first examined this on June 3. We unanimously recommended approval to Sections 1, 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10. So, what's missing? Section 2 and 4, we recommended denial to Section 2 and 4 in a split vote. The following meeting that we had, which was on July 8, we again unanimously recommended approval to the same Sections 1, 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10. And then, Section 2 was recommended for approval in a split vote, while Section 4 was again recommended for denial in a split vote. So, today, this ordinance is in front of us for the third time. I think what we want to do is, we want to dispense probably with the discussion on the things that we unanimously voted for, 1, 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10, and kind of zoom in on Section 2 and 4, perhaps. So, Section 2, this amends the on-street and off-street parking and loading requirements, only in the WBOD. Part A, two things. So, where the on-street metered parking currently exists, within close proximity to a proposed or expanded permitted use, no additional parking shall be required. So, this is a situation where a business functioning under a permitted use does not have any parking, and it's looking to expand that permitted use, and looking for no relief, not having to go in front of the zoning hearing board for relief for that parking. Mr. Nelson, could you give us a definition of close proximity?
No.
Okay. So, the stipulation.
I mean, the definition is, you know, joking aside, I don't, it's not defined in the zoning ordinance. Therefore, the courts would then look to common definition of that word within like Webster's dictionary, other commonly used dictionaries. So, you can look at it there and see what the definition is, but I believe you were looking for a specific number. Is it 100 feet, 500 feet, 1,000 feet? That I cannot do.
So, in theory, the applicant could come in and say, there's parking in close proximity, just happens to be 1,000 feet away. I qualify under this particular ordinance amendment.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And, but, and then the Board of Commissioners, or, you know, Kevin Kachansky could say, well, no, we don't think that's, you know, that's not proximate, and deny it. And then it would, that, if it was Kevin, that denial would go to the zoning hearing board. If it was the Board of Commissioners denying a land development plan, you know, that would go to county court.
Okay. So, potentially, this avoids going to the zoning hearing board on all cases, where there's a expanded use of a permitted use type of, type of a business?
Yes, they would be, people who don't comply now, and would comply if this ordinance is changed, would avoid having to get a variance.
Okay. In the case where there is a permitted use, let's say it's a retail use, and that permitted use changes over to a restaurant use, which, in theory, greater demand for parking, would the applicant, if this became part of our zoning code, would the applicant have to? the applicant, if this became part of our zoning code, would the applicant have to go in front of zoning hearing board to get relief on parking?
Under our current ordinance?
No, under the proposed.
Under the proposed ordinance? No, so long as available metered public parking was, you know, proximate to the proposed property.
Okay. So my concern with this, as I had before, and in the June meeting, I did not attend the July meeting, was that we're essentially writing a blank check for businesses that are changing their parking requirements, shall we say? Which is why I voted no the first time. We do have a comprehensive land use plan that's pending. We also have, in the WBOD specifically, we also have transit-oriented development parking, which will, study which will ultimately include parking and the demands on parking. So my thought was to address it at that time when we have more information.
So I totally feel that we should not have any minimum parking requirements in the downtown of Wayne. And that's all I'm going to say about it, and that's why I voted the way I did. And I'm going to continue to vote the way I did. I don't like spot zoning, so I don't agree with jumping the gun on the comp plan, but I think this is the right way to go. I think, as a matter of fact, I think Montgomery County, Maryland just eliminated all mandatory parking limits. So I think the pendulum is swinging that way. And I think if you lived in Wayne for 40 years like I have, you'd know that you can park somewhere pretty close to a business you're going to use and walk to it.
Any other Commissioner thoughts, comments? Okay. Why don't we take a vote? It appears that we've taken a vote three times on this, twice on this thing, and we're going to take another vote and send this on down. All right. With respect to section 4, this is essentially, not to borrow from Mr. Commissioner Golis's vernacular, but this is essentially spot zoning. Section 4 deals with three special use areas, one of which appeared in front of us tonight. But it changes the height, the setbacks, the impervious coverage, as well as the parking regulations for those three special use areas in the WBOD. And I voted in the negative. I do believe that WBOD should look and feel the same where possible, which is why I voted in the way that I did. Any other thoughts, Commissioners?
Just to clarify, I think that section's been revised since our last vote as well to include the words whichever is taller for the height of 45 feet or four stories. So previously, my interpretation was that it was limited to both 45 feet and four stories is the maximum. But now it appears that that's opened up beyond 45 feet. Just to clarify.
Sure. Yeah, and thank you. That's a great call out. And I guess, maybe this is a Mr. Norsini question. So in a, in an ordinance that stipulates 45 feet building height or four stories, whichever is higher, what would the ultimate height of a building be that's subject to those requirements?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I don't have that answer, but the four stories or is it the 45?
It just seems like you could, the sky's the limit?
No, I don't think the sky's the limit, but I don't have the limit for you.
Okay. Could it be 60 feet with four stories?
Still don't have the limit for you.
Well, I'm asking you to step, stipulate. Could a building that's four stories in height be 60 feet tall?
So you're asking me to speculate?
Speculate, yes, I'm sorry.
And in all honesty, I'd rather not speculate on something of this sort. I don't, I don't think it's warranted at this point. But I understand your question, but I would rather not speculate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good. So why don't we take a vote on these three items? I'm assuming that with-
MJ, could I just, just a quick question? Peter, could you just clarify, from the version that we saw at last month's meeting, are there two changes that have been made? And the first change would be to section 1?
I'm sorry, I'd have to look. I don't know off the top of my head. And I, you'd have to give me five minutes to see if I can find a document that shows the differences.
So what I'm referencing is, in the version that we're looking at tonight, there are two sections that are highlighted.
Yeah, I don't have that copy in front of me.
Do you want it? We can provide it.
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, but the changes are highlighted.
I would think the elements-
So there's two, okay. So the two changes that I'm seeing, section 1 is different than last month, and it's now to add the clause unless an accommodation to the height is required under the American with Disabilities Act, ADA, which is just a provision to say unless it's required by federal law. So that's, that's the only change to that section. And then the only other change is to section 4 that we were just talking about, to change sub-paragraph 4, just to say whichever is taller. That section was actually voted down twice. Okay.
Yep. Any other comments? All right. Well, let's take a vote. I think we want to take three here as before. So first motion, I'll make it. So in the matter of ordinance 2024 dash, 2020, is it 2024? 2024-4, I'd like to make the motion recommend approval to sections 1, 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Vines. All in favor? Unanimous. All right, very good. Second motion. So this is in the matter of ordinance 2024-4. The motion is to recommend denial to section 2. This has to do with parking requirements in the WBOD.
Section 1, they recommended a doubt.
Can I get a second? Okay. I'm going to make a different motion. In the matter of ordinance 2024, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval to section 2. Can I get a second on that? Okay. Second by Golis. All in favor? All right. So Vines, Golis, Nat, and Kim. Against?
Fruman and Dow.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, we have section 1 was unanimous recommending, recommendation of approval?
Correct.
Section 2, 4 to 2, recommendation of approval.
Correct.
So let me clarify. The first vote was on section 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10?
1, 3-
Sorry, 1, 3.
5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10.
Second vote was just on section 2?
Approval of section 2. And we have one more section to go. So this is section 4. So in the matter of ordinance 2024-4, the motion is to recommend denial to section 4. Can I get a second? All right, second by Dow. All in favor? Unanimous. All right, very good.
And I know it's a little after the fact, but yes, the highlight in yellow signifies the two most recent changes.
All right, thank you. Motion to adjourn? Second by Golis. All in favor? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, good night.